Hey guys, we're live.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight is Tuesday, December 8th. It's the monthly meeting of the Planning Board, virtual meeting. So the first item on the agenda is a special permit with site plan approval. Public hearing continued. Nicole, could you read the announcement?
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Mous General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing on Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, at 7:30 PM via Zoom platform. The agenda with login information will be posted on the Planning Board's webpage 48 hours prior to the public hearing. McDonald's Real Estate Company, 110 North Carpenter Street, Chihuahua, Illinois, is requesting a special permit under Section 8. Special permit conditions, Paragraph C, Site Plan Review of the Planning Board of the Town of Millis, and Section 12Q, Section 5, Use Regulations to Raise and Rebuild the Existing McDonald's Restaurant Located at 808 Main Street, Millis Map, Millis, Mass. Assessors' Map 24, Parcel 3. A copy of the application and site plan is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk and on the Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
Thank you. So the applicant actually asked to have that application to be withdrawn without prejudice, so I make a motion that we...
First, if you want, Nicole, could you read their letter into the record? Do you have the letter from them?
Yes, do. Town of Millis, Millis Planning Board, Attention, Richard Nichols, Chair. Regarding McDonald's Restaurant, 808 Main Street, Millis, Mass., Site Plan Review, Special Permit Application. Dear Mr. Nichols and members of the Planning Board, Unfortunately, McDonald's has made a change to the proposed development plan for this property. In consideration of the Board's time and on behalf of McDonald's Corporation, we are requesting to withdraw the application for Site Plan Review, Special Permit, without prejudice for the proposed raise and rebuild of the McDonald's Restaurant at 808 Main Street. We appreciate the Board's patience and attention to this project over the past months, and we look forward to reviewing application with the Board in the future. Sincerely, Bowler Engineering.
Okay, so first, Rich, you can see if there's any discussion amongst the Board members, then close the public hearing, and then you can vote on the request.
Okay, so is there any discussion? All right, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great, all right. The motion's been made and seconded and closed, so we're done. All right.
Now you have to make the motion to whether or not to approve the withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the withdrawal without prejudice for 808 Main Street McDonald's. Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
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 All right, great, thank you. All right, and now, second in line is the... Sorry, I have the Fields, Memorial Fields Project?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the third time that we've been here. If anybody takes a ride by the town fields, they'll see the three fields that the Planning Board approved, the $25,000 in funds for the renovation of the fields is completed. You can see they were all three dirt fields, and that was requested by the Millis Youth Baseball, actually wanted Cisto 2 to be a dirt field. And so it could be used eventually for softball in both. I know that they're going to purchase a portable pitches mound that they'll use there. At Cisto Field, we had to replace a good chunk of the irrigation system. It's outdated, rotted, and that's going to help us with, you know, the bills, because it was leaking, one was leaking under the pitches mound when they ripped it up. Michael Rand was the, he's the president of the Millis Girls Softball League, and he oversaw the project. He was the one that actually filed with the Planning Board and the CPC for the funding. And he was going to be here tonight, but I think something, he just texted me, something got messed up with the Zoom invite, but... So on his behalf, he did write a letter to the Board, to the Chair, stating that the work is complete and what little has to be done. But take a ride by, I think you're going to be impressed with what you see there. So I would ask that, I believe Camille has the bill from the contractor, and it's of $38,000. We thought this would be the best use of the funds from Toll Brothers, you know, the gift fund of $25,000. And I believe the Board, the Planning Board should vote, you know, to approve that, because it was a gift from Toll Brothers in put in care of the Planning Board. And I think the Planning Board should see that, you know, through the, you know, the whole process. And at the end of it, if approved, I would ask that we write a letter to Toll Brothers, you know, explaining where the funds went. I can help Camille and the Chair write that letter.
Okay, that sounds great. So it's, we should thank Mr. Rand for all his work and your work, Jim. So it's good that we're doing something positive to help the downtown area also. So I make a motion that we approve the $25,000 for, towards the bill that was set forth.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great, motion was carried unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One final thought on that, the fencing, the backstops and the fencing across the front of Town Hall, you know, the entrance, that will start to be replaced, hopefully starting this Monday. He said he can still work during, you know, it's just drilling holes, so he plans on working through the winter with putting all the back, three backstops up, replacing one of the, fixing one and putting, replacing the fence as you drive up Park Road. That'll all be black mesh fence. So thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Great, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, Jim, for all your work.
All right, next item on the agenda is special permit with site plan approval. Public hearing continued. Nicole, could you read that for us?
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board, Notice of Public Hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Mous General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing on Tuesday, December 8th, 2020, at 7:35 PM via Zoom platform. The agenda with login information will be posted on the Planning Board's webpage 48 hours prior to the public hearing. The Millis Brook School Foundation Incorporated, 376 Orchard Street, Millis, Mass., is requesting a special permit application for site plan approval to construct a school building along the driveway, parking, stormwater systems, et cetera, at 376 Orchard Street, Sparhawk Academy, Millis Map. Assessors' Map 9, Parcel 1. A copy of the application and site plan is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk and on the Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
And this was asked to be continued without discussion per applicant's request, so that would be for our next meeting. Camille?
That can go to January 12th at 7:40 PM.
Okay, great. All right, and moving along.
Motion, you have to make a motion to continue to that date and time?
All right, I make a motion to continue the public hearing to our next meeting.
Second.
All right, the motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. All right, so, sorry. So next on the agenda would be the DPW project informal discussion with Mr. Clarko.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman, thank you for having us. We're here to present our project for site plan review. I'm not sure how much orientation this committee needs. I know that the subject of the DPW project has been in front of town meeting, I believe, three times now. I'm happy to walk through a couple of drawings, if you feel that's necessary. If you'd like me to share my screen, Rich, it's really up to you. The project is very straightforward. It's constructing two buildings, a vehicle service and wash building, which is 2,900 square feet, and a staff building, which is 2,300 square feet on the current DPW site at Seven Water Street. These functions currently exist within the, in the existing building. They're detrimental to the use of that building. It's detrimental to the, to the employees that work in that building, and therefore, that's what has caused us to remove them and, and place them in their own separate buildings. We're, we've been to the Conservation Commission, and we're now in front of you, asking for approval. I believe your engineer, Beta, has the drawings, and I think has undertaken at least some review up to this point. And so I'll just turn it over to you and ask whether or not you have any questions and what you'd like to hear from us.
Yeah, Wayne, if you don't mind, if you just show the buildings quick, I think that's about really all we were interested in, in just the site plan, just as a, as a quick, you know, like executive summary.
Sure.
Because we'll be going through it. And the other thing is, just for the public, we are going through this process because we want to be transparent. We make other developers go through this, and so we just want to make sure that, you know, we're being straight across the board. So, you know, there's, everybody's held to the same letter of the law.
And, excuse me, the public hearing will be scheduled for January 12th. I will create the notice and advertise and do the butter, the butter notices by mail, but it will be on January 12th at 7:30.
All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yep, great. So what you see here is the existing building in white, and then the two gray buildings are the two proposed buildings. The one in front is the staff building. Again, 2,300 square feet, that's a wood frame construction, metal sided building, housing the offices and locker rooms and wash facilities for the employees that work in the building. Again, there are offices that are, and facilities that are currently in the building. They're inadequate, there's mold, there's moisture problems in the building. And again, that's why we're moving that function outside to its own separate building. The separation between that building and the current DPW garage is, I believe, 15 feet, which creates its own separate fire area, which does not require us to, to bring the existing building up to any kind of code compliance. In the back is the vehicle wash and repair facility. If you can see, again, these are, this is an aerial 3D representation. There's two bays there. The one closest to you is the, is the wash bay, where vehicles that are, need to be washed because of salt are brought in, water's collected in a sump below it, and then can drive through. And then, and then the other bay is for service. There'll be a lift, it will be able to service the town's largest facilities and largest vehicles, I should say, including the fire truck. And so it's been sized to service the existing facilities. Any questions so far? All right, let's see. This slide is a little busy. This is a direct overhead view. What we're trying to show here is the relationship of particularly the vehicle wash and storage building to wetlands that are behind the, the current site. That's all been reviewed by the Conservation Commission. There's a retaining wall that will maintain an elevation difference between those wetlands and the current facility, the parking lot, and then the, the storage, or I said, the service building will come right up to that retention area. School buses will be parked in front as you, if you pull in, if you use the transfer station, the school buses will be right along the road as you come into the site. Here's a diagram of the, of the vehicle storage or service and wash building. The lift, the, we currently have a lift that's in the existing building. It's going to be moved into this facility. You can see in very light drawing, a representation of a truck. Actually, it is, the, the wash bay is the one that's furthest away. Repair bay is the closest. Any questions on these buildings up to this point in time? All right, then moving along. Here's an elevation. This is, I think, looking west. You can see the two overhead doors. There's a high bay area that will allow some natural light into the building, but also give the elevation needed to get on top of the, of the larger vehicles, either for washing or to, or to raise them on the lift. And here's the elevation on the, would be on the west side looking east. Again, there's one area, one bay that is a drive-through. And here is the elevation, I'm thinking, from the south looking north. Here's the other. Again, very basic construction. This building is metal panel on metal frame. The roof is a rubber membrane, EPDM membrane. Very standard commercial and industrial construction. Here's the overhead view of the staff building, offices, washroom, and locker facilities for the current staff. And again, elevation drawings. I believe this would be from the south, north, opposite. And this would be up against the existing DPW building. And here's the one that would be from the east looking west. Again, very basic building. The whole point in this project in terms of asking voters to support it is to make it very economical. It's a very modest project. We worked hard to keep it within, within budget. We've been challenged to do that several times over the, over the course of the design. And the bidding of the project, this is a very difficult time for bidding, which is why we wound up at town meeting, most recently asking for some additional funds, primarily due to increased material costs due to the coronavirus affecting the material supply chain of many construction materials. And so having been through all of that, we are, we have a building permit in hand, and we have a site meeting scheduled for Thursday morning. The contractor is ready to mobilize and begin construction, and hopefully, we will have foundation in the ground before winter sets in so that we can continue with construction through the winter. So, any questions regarding this?
Oh, this all looks great, Wayne, thank you. It's great to have the overview on that, and we'll...
Will I stop sharing?
Yeah, that's great, yep.
Okay, all right.
No, so I think that kind of just walks through what, what you're doing down there. We have beta just going through, they're going to walk through the engineering for the stormwater and parking and impervious surfaces, and I think we should be all, hopefully, we'll go through that, and we'll, we will have done due diligence, and we'll move on and get this thing built.
Great.
May I interrupt for just one second? I think there was going to be a waiver request to waive the $350 application filing fee. Is that correct, Jim, and Wayne?
Yes, that's correct.
So you will have to make a motion to approve that request.
All right, I make a motion to approve waiving the $350 application fee.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, great, it passed unanimously, thank you.
I guess, I guess the other point that I would say, Rich, is, I guess, consistent with how the Planning Board has overseen the other municipal construction in town, we have paid beta's actual out-of-pocket cost. So I would expect that beta will submit itemized bills for their time and expense, and I would expect that the Planning Board will review those, and if in order, submit those to the Permanent Building Committee for payment.
Correct, that's, yep.
Out of the project.
Yep, and that was the, what we had discussed, I talked to beta about that, and that would be the way that we would do that, so. So, good, and once again, I do want to make sure that everybody knows the amount of time that both Jim and Wayne have spent on getting this thing to the point it's at, and it's, it's been a long road, and it hasn't been an easy road. So appreciate all your efforts towards getting this thing done.
Well, thank you. None of these are easy. This one has been particularly difficult in coming up with a solution. I know Jim has been, you know, he's lived with this and has been frustrated as have the people who, who work there, and we're, we're pretty happy that we're finally going ahead with it, so we're in a good spot. This is a good position to be in, and we...
So Jimmy, you're going to be on a machine putting the first bucket through the roof?
There you go, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll stay clear of it, I'll do the paperwork and the computer work of it. They have to handle and all that. If I could just quickly just say one sentence, I mean, you know, you know, Mr. Clarko keeps on saying economical, and it is economical, but I want the public to know, this is going to be, this is, this is it. I mean, this is, this is a good size, you know, we looked at many options of tearing the building down, replacing it, leaving the structure in place that will house equipment. The town will never outgrow that, that facility there. And there'll be no reason to come back and say, oh, we're going to hire 30, 40 guys. It's not going to happen. We have, you know, the, the staff at the DPW will never grow, outgrow the size of the staff wing. The mechanics bay, it's sufficient, as Wayne stated. It fits the largest truck, the fire truck in there, if we ever have to get in there and get it washed or repaired. So it does fit everything, so that's, you know, that, the Permanent Building Committee did put a lot of effort into making sure whether, you know, the size of it is, it's sufficient for the Town of Millis and the DPW from now into the future of the next... Wayne, what do you say, the buildings last, they're supposed to last 40, 50 years?
They should. We, our, our committee has always taken the long-term approach to capital investment, and I believe that we've done that here.
Absolutely.
And I guess I would just say anecdotally, if you look at what Medfield has spent, what our neighbors have spent on DPW facilities, Jim, can you give us some figures on...
It's upwards 14 to 18 million dollars.
Right.
Yeah, and it almost in the 20s, so.
We're happy with... Great, oh, sorry. Thank you for the, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I guess we'll see you in January.
Yes, I'll make sure to send you a copy of the hearing notice when I have confirmation from the paper.
Okay, Happy New Year.
You too, thank you.
Bye.
All right.
All right, great, well, that was great. In other business, we have zoning bylaws, subdivision rules, regulations, Nicole Riley.
And if I could just interrupt here again, after the last meeting, when you guys decided to go forward with two of the revisions to the subdivision rules and regs, we do have to hold a public hearing on that. That does not go before town meeting, but we do have to hold a, a public hearing on the amending the subdivision rules and regulations. So I will schedule that for January 12th as well, where you just formally approve the two that you want to change, and then we hold a public hearing, and then if it's approved, I place another ad, and then it becomes effective.
All right, great.
Well, so to those subdivision rules and regulations that we discussed and decided upon the changes last month, we were also discussing amending the parking dimensions to the zoning bylaw. Last month, we did, I provided you all with some parking dimensions and square footage that was standard used by the Southwest, the Swap Parking Bylaw Project, as being their recommended nine by 18 feet. The majority of towns surrounding us, smaller towns, do follow that, parking dimensions of nine by 18, and then some do give the opportunity to buy special permit, provide for a small car or small car parking. There was a recommendation for mass smart growth not to use the phrase compact car, because there are some actual vehicles that their brand name, that referred to as compact, where they may still be an SUV, but it's a compact SUV, and would not fall into the actual definition of a small car. Generally speaking, that dimensions would be nine and a half by, eight and a half by 15 versus, say, a nine by 18. And then that would also depend on whether you were, we wanted to get into it with regards to angling. So we were going to pick up that conversation where we left off last month. If anyone else has any opinions on what we want to do.
Yeah, I think I remember last time... Yeah, I think I remember last time that we talked about it, the consensus we had that is that um I think we would, the, the last comment was that we would keep it as it was and then go through and do the any change, just like we've been doing by special uh, you know, by special permit. Um, but, that being said, um, you know, the, maybe some thought to uh maybe the, some sort of incentive for, you know, or being allowed to use the, the small car um a percentage of those, you know, we, we could put that in there as allowable.
Well, the small car, the use of small car parking would be, you would need to put that into a bylaw um as a, an option under a special permit, designating what percentage, the maximum percentage that we would allow and designating um what those, what the dimensions would be. Um, it would be by special permit. Um, I actually okay, my notes had it different, but I may be uh incorrect with regards to whether we were going to. So, Mr. Chair, you're saying we're, the planning board's now not interested in reducing the parking dimensions?
No, no, I didn't say that, I said that I think that was, I think that was where we had left it. I do, and we are picking up that conversation now, I think that's, so, we can now pick it up and if someone has any thoughts on um, you know, I, I think a certain, maybe a small percentage of the, you know, allowable small car. What did the um, what did the M, uh, the uh, uh Metro West, what was there? They had like a small, it was like
Uh, mass, mass growth, smart parking model um lists up, up to thirty percent.
Yeah, I think that
Um, swap, the swap small car um revert, references anywhere from, suggestion of anywhere from ten to fifty percent. Multi- the other towns that we found, I, the, the largest percentage I found was thirty-three percent. Um, but those were in, like, the city of Marlborough, the city of Lexington, um where, you know, you're probably going to have larger facilities. Um, smaller areas, Midway has actually, Midway does not have a limit, they just have dimensional standards. Um, O'Needham allows up to fifty percent. Um, Amherst allows up to fifty percent, Maynard allows up to twenty. Bellingham, fifty percent. Um, considering that you know, it, it, it is a request by special permit. Um, and as we had discussed last month, presumably, the developer is going to take into consideration the size of their lot, the use of their lot, the layout when asking their percentage. Um, I mean, honestly, I think out here, I think fifty percent is, is much larger than we would wanna get into. Um, but somewhere between twenty and thirty percent, um again, under special permit. So that would allow us through our, through Beta to say, yeah, you know what, if they're looking for, for a percentage, they may see a, this layout, this use, that's, that's kind of a lot. So, it still gives us control over that number. It's, it's not, if we say thirty percent, it's not a, a given that they have thirty percent.
Okay, well, I mean, that, that sounds reasonable to me, that I think we should, I think adding something in the books would be good. And since we have the ability to adjust it, thirty percent's fine with me. Um, yeah, I, is anyone else have any thoughts on that? George, you drive the big vehicle, what do you think about small cars?
I have a couple of those too, so, no, the thirty percent should be fine. I mean, I don't think big cars are going away and, you know, it's gonna be ten years down the road for all this gets together anyhow, so. If we go with the thirty percent and if we have to make a waiver down the road for a particular project, that's fine too.
Hey, it only took us a couple of years to get chickens out of the way, so we can get cars even faster.
Okay.
Alan, did you have any thoughts?
Um, no, I like the thirty, that's fine. Um, the, my main concern is on the eighteen feet on the standard states. Um, I, I'd really like to see nineteen. Uh, there's a number of vehicles in excess of eighteen feet that are pretty common, I don't have numbers, but uh Chevy Suburbans close to nineteen feet, some of the larger pickup trucks are nineteen feet. Um, you know, why are we changing? Because we get a lot of variances, so how many of those variances would have worked at nineteen instead of eighteen? And we can still get variances, you know, if someone needs the space, they can't fit a nineteen-foot space in, you know, with cause, that's fine, but, you know, why, why not have parking spaces that can accommodate a number of vehicles?
Okay, that's fine, uh Boda? Okay, Josh, do you have any thoughts on parking spaces? You drive a little car too.
I do, um, no, and I, I shared some of my thoughts at the last meeting, but essentially, all you're looking to do is make sure that you um you have a good efficiency model and it seems like, you know, this will allow for an accommodation for vehicles that we have in the growing town, so it makes sense to me. I don't know why it would be an issue and, as Nicole said, um, you know, you could always apply for special permit um in the event there needs to be alterations to accommodate the plans that we have set forth in the future for the town. So it's not like anything's just hard and fast, so, yeah, I, I, I'm fine with it.
Okay, great.
So we will look to amend the current zoning bylaw for the definition of uh off-street parking, changing it from nine feet by twenty-one to nine feet by nineteen?
Sure.
Is that what everybody is in agreement with?
Yep, yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, I will, um, I will make that amendment uh and, and as well, look at, um as I had said before, a lot, some of the towns or a couple of cities that have very, very detailed small parking uh, um, compact car, small car parking definitions, some of them are very general. I will, um, I'll prepare one of each and get it out to everybody to review with time before um our next meeting.
We have the parallel parking dimensions from the last meeting, we're gonna go with that? Those twenty-two feet, I believe?
Yep.
Thank you.
Now, is that, you're going to main, you're looking to maintain, that's on a standard car. Twenty-two feet parallel parking is for standard length. The, for compact car, it wouldn't be, if you're going to provide for parallel parking for compact cars. Now, you could always just not allow small-sized car area to be um, to have, to be parallel parking. You could, we could write this so that small car parking was either at a ninety-five, between ninety-five to, to, excuse me, between forty-five to ninety-degree ankle parking instead of parallel parking. Um, that's another option. And just leave the uh parallel parking to be standard size.
I mean, that, that sounds like it makes sense to me, I mean, because the parallel parking could be anybody versus, I think if you had a small car parking, it, to be, like you said, uh ninety or forty-five, and then just make an area for that. Because if it like pulling in front of like off the street, in front of, like the old Rexall, you know, that you would pull alongside that.
Right, and I think if you, generally speaking, if you've got parallel parking, um, you would have to, you would then have to have a sign in, pretty much in front of each, middle of each parallel space. And that's going to create a whole new set of issues. So I think if we're gonna do this, I think that, that uh it should be available in a lot where it's it's at an angle, let's say there again, somewhere between forty-five and ninety-degree angle.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, may I ask a question, uh, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
Um, go, uh, how would this affect um parking within overlay districts?
Well, again, this is um by special permit only, um so it would be something that um it would apply in any parking area. And the, if the developer wanted to utilize this, they could utilize the smart car parking, up, or small car parking, excuse me, up to thirty percent by special permit. So if we were talking about having um the small car in the shared car that we had talked about, which I do, I have to um apologize, Bob, I did not have a chance to look up any, any bylaws regarding shared parking. Um, and we did wanna do that. Um, but we could, that would, shared car for the, would, would most likely also be something that would be done by special permit. Um, it would be a separate request, so then the planning board would, would be able to look at all of it.
Alright, because I, I think i- i- in the overlay districts, we're probably looking at a little bit more density. Um, so, being able to have uh, just generally having uh small cars accounted for, I think, I think that would help in the overlay districts, certainly.
Well, this doesn't, um, the parking definitions don't, size-wise, does not change from zoning district to zoning district. They're standardized, whether you're gonna have the standard now nine by nineteen or small car is the same regardless of which zoning district it's located or whether it, it falls in, under a um, an overlay district, if that's being utilized. The dimensions currently as they stand are all the same. So we'd be looking at it in the same aspect. It just now will come into play whether we um decide to do a shared parking. And that would, I've, I'm gonna have to look at it, but I think the shared parking might actually be something that would be added to the, the MCEOD. I don't know that, that would really, shared parking would really apply in anything else.
I don't think so either, because of the uh, yeah, the uses involved.
Uh, it's been a
Something has occurred with it, uh, uh, in, in considering going to, what would say, nine by nineteen, a little bit long, so it's a little bit longer. And, you know, I, I work in, in Town Hall and I look out into the parking lot there and we have a lot of uh council of aging members who park there, who have the amazing ability to take a, 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 a small car, even a twelve, and you, and use the entire twenty feet or nineteen feet of a space. It really makes a lot of sense to have a little bit longer space for a lot of, a lot of folks uh in, in certain parking lots.
Well, and that's, that just goes to again, the point, you know, keeping, adding it at nineteen feet as opposed to trying to cut it down to eighteen feet. You know, it gives that little extra leeway.
Okay, um, so the only other thing was, you had something on the um zoning map amendment, the MCOD discrepancy that you wanted to run through?
Yes, when we were first doing the uh, the, the new, the amendment to the MCEOD, we found that there was a discrepancy between the current bylaw and the zoning map. Um, the bylaw references four parcels that, um, the bylaw actually lists specifically what parcels fall under the MCEOD. There are four parcels that are listed in the bylaw that do not show on the zoning map in full. And then there are another six parcels in which are listed, but the zoning map shows them as cutting only half of the MCEOD applies. And the distinction is under our bylaws, um, the original map, the zoning map shall be the final determinant of any disputed zoning district. So, what that does is present a, you've got ten pieces of property that either are, were told, which that the town thought were going to be included in the MCEOD when they passed it at town meeting, but yet the drawing of the zoning map excludes them um or excludes part of the lot. So we were going to look into trying to amend that. Um, Camille and I, in looking through some of this just in the MCEOD, have found that there are multiple discrepancies between the bylaws and the map. Um, there are, in the original MCEOD, the bylaw states that this just overlay district is to apply to commercial property. However, the zoning map line goes halfway through four residential lots. So those four lots, a portion of their property is in the MCEOD. Now, again, it says that it's for commercial property, so it probably wouldn't come into play, but it's very sloppy. Um, and it could raise question if somebody wanted to argue it. It also, um, if you, you, simply looking at the new area, the new MCEOD, what the map distinguishes as commercial or commercial village parcels um, as the, excuse me, the commercial district, it actually cuts through nine different parcels. So there are nine parcels that are, that, the district cuts them in half. So they're part commercial and part residential or IP, depending upon what they have bought. There's also a distinction, we have in the bylaws, we have a definition for the village business district. And we have a designation of that as a zoning district. However, the zoning map doesn't include the village business as a zoning district. So it doesn't exist, even though it was passed, I mean, there is no lot, there is no parcel that has ever been um zoned into the village district, but even if they wanted to, according to the map, it doesn't exist. My point being, there are a lot of
I was gonna say the point, the point is that we're
The point being, we're coming up with a lot of discrepancies between our zoning map and our zoning bylaws. And at this point, I don't think that this is something that can properly be addressed just by the planning board. So my, after Camille and I were discussing it and ran it by the chair this afternoon, our just, our recommendation or suggestion, I should say, would be to reach out to um Jim McKay, to the Board of Selectmen, to the Assessors Office, and see if the Board of Selectmen would agree to whether we need a, a committee put together to review this, if it's just something that these three departments should, can do together. Um, but we really need to do, to undertake a full review of the bylaws versus the zoning map uh before we can even consider amending or maybe bringing in the GIS mapping for our zoning map purposes. Because we really are looking at a cluster.
Yep, so that makes, that makes a lot of sense, so I think that's, um, Camille, that we would, do we need to vote on that or?
No, 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 I think we, we just need to do some more research, I think, because this was done way back when. And I think it's just a matter of tweaking some of the lines on the zoning map, because it's really just a, a caricature. It's like an overview, it's not an actual meant-to-match-up, like the, it's different the way the zoning map, you know, delineates lines and things like that, it's kind of just an overview from what I understand. So, it definitely needs some tweaking because, like Nicole mentioned, the village business district. That was a district, a bylaw that was passed, however, the, the parcels that they wanted to change to be a VB district did not pass. So that's why we have that district, but there's no parcels that are designated as such, because that part of the article didn't pass. So, there's a lot of, you know, puzzle pieces that have to be put together, but I do think just a matter of sitting down and trying to pretty much go over the MCEOD when it was originally created and compare that with the mixed-use development parcels that are listed in the bylaws and just kind of get those to be in sync. So I think it's something that just requires a little more investigation and looking into.
Alright, good.
That's, one of the problems is that you have That's, one of the problems is that you have, um, section thirteen. Is the, is the definition, it sets out the M C E O D. But under section three, that distinguishes the parcels, it's listed as mixed-use development, I mean, there's, there's just a lot of sloppiness. That I think we need to potentially sit down with, whether it's the Assessor's Office, or, but, you know. Contact Mike Kaczynski and say. How do we start this, where do we, you know? And then, once that can be cleaned up, possibly then moving towards. Um. Maybe a G I S system, so that it is much clearer.
Okay. Right, that sounds like a good, uh, good idea, and, um. So the other thing is, I took a, one of the classes that you had suggested, um, so. That is, the one that I took on was a design review class. Um, so basically, what that is, is it allows the planning board to put in zoning in a district. To not just have it as a suggestion that we, um, you know, try to make the buildings meet a certain standard. Um, you know, like the, like, uh, we've been trying to do downtown, but we actually could put that in the, in the zoning. So that would allow us to have. The actual teeth to our request. Um. To make the buildings conform. Um, there are, uh, many other towns that have it, I think it may make sense for just the downtown area. And we could do something like a design review light, where, you know, we try to. To get the buildings to not be a big box, um, but have some more of the, um. Village charm that we were looking for. Um, so that'd be something that I, I was, would bring up to the board and see what anyone's thoughts was on that, but like I said, that would give us some real, we'd have some standing behind us on that. Uh, wouldn't be a preference, it would be actually in our body.
I think that's a great idea.
Bob, did you have any thoughts on that? Sorry, Nicole.
Well, there's, there's, um, what's it called, code by, uh, code, code by form? I believe it is, where the town can adopt, uh. Within a district, uh, just, just as you're talking about, we have certain standards, you know, height, height of where certain moldings would be, and how many stories, uh, how many stories and would accommodate. Where, where you would have the, uh, uh, roof, roof lines, the bottom of the roofs in in section, there's a code. Uh, that would allow the town to have within a district, uh, you know, you, you could design it by. More by design as opposed to the use. That's something, that's part of the Smart Growth, uh, program, too. Um, I I'd be glad to send you something on that, I think it's called Code by Form. So a lot of municipalities use that now, and that way, yes, they can develop, uh, like a downtown district to have a certain, not, a certain look, doesn't have to have the same style, but. Um, the buildings will have similar dimensions. So that you don't have, uh, you know, you don't have a. Uh, a Scandinavian kind of design building next to, uh, a chalet side, uh, kind of building, so. It kind of uniforms things up so that you feel as veteran or as somebody coming through the district, you feel more comfortable that. Design of the neighborhood was, was done thoughtfully.
And that's, and, and that's exactly, it's, it doesn't, I don't know if we have to, like I said, I I did read that, uh, um, that was one of the examples that they had. Um, I read a couple of them, um, you know, I think that we may want to do something, we're in Millis, so I think. I think we could, we could do it on a little, uh, less grand scale, but I think having something in there, um, would be advantageous. George, and you're, uh, you, you pushed on, uh, you know, trying to, you know, keep our village feel down there, so would that be something that you would be?
Oh, most, most definitely, you know, you, you get a town like Concord or Carlisle or any of those, or Lexington, they, they're gonna keep their stuff exactly. You know, you're not gonna put a McDonald's, Arches, and downtown Concord. And we should be able to do the same thing here, you know, not within reason, obviously. So, but as long as the place looks nice, that's the idea. And, you know, and sooner or later, you're gonna have a situation where the. Boda's building, pizza shop is gonna, you know, want to change things or whatever, and just make it look nice, same with the, the corner lot there where the old gas station was. So, yeah, I'd be all for that.
Any other thoughts? Anyone else? All right, um, so, um, I make a motion that we approve the minutes remote from November tenth, two thousand twenty. Seconded. All right, the motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and then I'm gonna do the, uh, the monthly update of things that were happening in Millis, um, which Bob, uh, nicely put together for us. Um. Uh, let's see, on the Barbary Homes, uh, on Bridge Street, the water and sewer connections continue on Bridge Street. Um, on Toll Brothers over on Orchard Street, the public walking trail that the planning board, um, uh, encouraged Toll Brothers to do is now actually open. Um, so there's a sign up, there's parking off of Orchard Street, uh, for cars. Uh, they have a list of, um, rules, you know, because it is a, e- even though it's a public space, it is, uh. It within the, the, the Toll Brothers Development, uh, but it is open to the public, um, it's a big giant trail. Um, and would be probably a nice thing if, uh, people go out and, and, and take a walk and see what we were able to. Uh, push through in, uh, for benefit of the public, so. And also to thank Toll Brothers for that also. Um. And what else? Uh, let's see. G T E L L C, the cultivating, manufacturing in, uh. Ma- manufacturing and cultivation, um, they had a, uh, they had, had the host community agreements been signed, and they reached out to the Building Commission to begin permitting. Um, that would be over on fourteen eighty Main Street. Um. Uh, the old Herman Schute Building. Um, they were continued to the November seventeenth hearing, which I imagine happened. And then engineering peer review is pending, and the parking study has, uh, begun, uh, Bob, did you have any update on that?
No, I, uh, asked, um. Um, Amy Sullivan yesterday and, and Peter Kapopoulos, and, uh, there was no update on that. I'll find, I'll find out in a couple of days, I guess, next, next Tuesday. We have the next.
All right, and I know that they did, we had a couple of concerns, uh, from the planning board on just, um, there's a lot of, uh, there's a significant amount of units there. And the parking, we did have a parking concern, uh, down there, that was about the biggest, uh. Concern that we had, um, and they, they did take note of that in their, in the review from the state. Um. Clodijav, Tresca, um, water and sewer plants have been submitted to the Select Board, Water and Sewer Commission, and the developer. Uh, will file soon with the planning board, and Camille, when, did they say they were gonna come in?
No, I have, I have not seen anything or heard from anyone yet on that.
Okay, all right. Um, the DPW building, um, the town, uh, approved the six hundred thousand dollars. And they're, uh, right now pending, uh, they're waiting for the, uh, building permits to come through, and they will actually start putting foundations in as soon as that is issued. Um. Three seventy-six, uh, Orchard Street, they continued that hearing, um, which we had in, um, uh, we just went over. Um, McDonald's withdrew their petition to do anything on that site. And Emerson Place, the developer plans on beginning the road construction in the winter, so. Um, those are the, uh, highlights of things that we, uh, had happen in the town. I skipped over a few that, that hadn't had any progress, but, um, that's in general what happened. Um. And what else, uh, Camille, we have bills, do we need to go over that?
Um, no, if, if the, um, the twenty-five thousand dollars, I will draft a letter to accompany the bills payable sheet to submit everything to accounting. Because the Community Preservation Committee is meeting on Thursday, and they'll be paying the thirteen thousand dollar balance of that invoice for the turf. So if it's okay with you folks, I will prepare a letter to go with, um, the bills payable sheet, but will you authorize, Rich, for me to sign the bills payable sheet on your behalf?
Yep.
Okay, and just.
And also, also, could you make sure that, um, I think it'd be, uh, like Jim said, I think if, uh, the board should send, uh. A, uh, I think we should, if we could send a letter to Mr. Rand for his work in, uh, putting this together.
Oh, sure.
And also, we should send one to Toll Brothers.
Absolutely, and I'll send, I'll send those to the board, uh, the draft to the board for final approval, absolutely, I can do that. And could we just, we have a meeting scheduled for January twelfth, because we possibly set a February date while we're at it?
Yep. Oh, it's a new year, that's exciting.
We have the second and the ninth are both Tuesdays. One, two, three, four, the ninth would probably make more sense, so there's enough time in between for any advertising for.
Ninth is fine with me.
Does that work for everyone else?
Yeah, that's a good.
Okay, so February ninth will be our second, okay.
All right, well, uh, if there's nothing else, uh, I make the motion that we, oh, George?
One question, I was, I was looking on the, this, uh, update, thirteen forty-four Main. Um. Did something come in on that, was, says twenty-five units of single-family housing? Now. Is that Hark East land?
I think that's the place up behind, across from Tractor Supply, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure.
Well, that's Tom Roach, uh, is.
Oh, yes, okay. Oh, yeah, all right, there's a couple of houses up there on the left, all right.
Yeah, 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 it's, I think it's, I think there's ninety thousand square feet, and, uh, he's been working with the Select Board, uh, on that. Uh, I, uh, in the last, I can't remember the last time he was there, it was probably a couple of months ago.
So this is a, um, this is a Tom Roach deal?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right, well, and then if there's nothing else, um, I wish everyone a, a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and, uh. Hopefully, twenty-one will be a lot better than this year was.
We need to adjourn.
Yeah, no, I was gonna do that, too, and I make a motion to adjourn.
I was the party.
It's a virtual party, and make it, it's gonna be in your mind.
All right, I second.
All right, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Good night, everyone, happy holidays.
Thank you, everyone, good night.